This meeting to order, the Board of Commissioners.
The Chair.
Just call the Board of Selectmen to order.
Okay, very good. Okay, well said. Okay, very good, thank you. This meeting of the RMLD Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners being videotaped at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Reading, Mass. The meeting is being videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. I'm going to read the code of conduct. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions and comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board should state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order on all public comment and ensuing discussion. Tonight we have people on the phone. We have John and Dave. John Stempak is on the phone, as is Dave Talbot tonight. Okay, John and Dave?
Yes, hello everybody.
Okay, very good.
Hi, John. Hi, Dave.
All right, so let me just kind of go over the order of which, because I want to keep this orderly. I'm going to read a statement first, at which point the Commissioners, if they want to add anything after that, at which point I will open up for public comment from anybody in the, on the public comment. The statement will be about the Subcommittee, in terms of that, and so at that point I would certainly entertain any public comment that anybody would have after that. And I ask everybody to keep it orderly at this point. The first thing I want to go through is I want to go through the timetable as to where things have gone in terms of the Negotiating, the Subcommittee on Negotiating the Payment to the Town. As, I'm going to read the Instructional Motion, which has been provided by Mr. Enzinger tonight. The motion was to instruct the Board of Selectmen in light of the Town's difficulties, in the difficult financial stage to study the Reading Municipal Light Department with an objective of increasing annual revenues to the Town. That was the April of 2017 Town Meeting Motion. Basically, in terms of that, we, it took some time to get the members of that particular Subcommittee, it was agreed to have a Subcommittee, two members of the, two members of the Commission, myself and Mr. Stempak, two, we had a member, two members of the CAB, Mr. Hooper and Mr. Cohen, who represents Reading, and we also had a member of the Board of Selectmen, which is Mr. Enzinger, who's here tonight. It took some time to get the members in place. Once the members in place, on December, on September the 27th, we actually had our first meeting at that point. In terms of what was discussed at that meeting, which are some general ideas as to what outlines each of the groups kind of had at that point. It was left at that point that the members would go back to their individual groups and then they would come back to us at a, at a period of time when they had some more input. There were no numbers discussed at that first meeting at that point. That, basically, I appeared in front of the CAB back in the end of October, I believe it's the 27th is the date I had that, and made a presentation of the financial structure to the CAB. November came along, that was Town Meeting. December comes along, that's Christmas. Tracy, the Department over here, as in the middle of December, tried to get a meeting set up for early in January, as best we could. We were unable to get all the members together at that point, in terms of that. At that point, it was agreed upon to have a meeting in the, in the month of February, in terms of that. So we met in, we met in February. At that point, the RMLD, I put forward a proposal. There was a counter-proposal from the Board of Selectmen, and that's where kind of things stand at that point. At the March, at the March meeting was the first time that we had discussed numbers at that point. You know, one of the things that, you know, that was, one of the things that, you know, we can have a lot of blame going around with each of us, on each side. We can all point fingers tonight. You know, the one thing I ask is that, you know, we try to work together and get this thing resolved at this point. You know, so with that in mind, we have worked, you know, I'm going to, in that spirit, going forward, we have worked through a number, the Department and the, ourselves, have worked through numerous iterations of worksheets and analysis to arrive at what we feel is a good solution to the issue at hand. However, it's not our intent to debate or resolve the RMLD payment to the Town tonight. A committee that has been set up, as we've talked about, in terms of where we are on that, has been set up. Let me get the right page here. One of the things, you know, one of the things we want to do is the RMLD wants to support the Town of Reading and believes it has found a solution that'll work for Reading and for the rate payers, and fit into the financials of the Town, at the Town, at the Town, at the RMLD at this time. There is another committee meeting scheduled for March 12th, at which time the RMLD will offer a refined and expanded version that we feel will benefit both Reading and our other towns, and also specifically for the rate payers. If accepted at all, by all parties, the committee will recommend that the RMLD Board approve and implement this approach. It is our expectation this issue can be resolved, and any final recommendation voted for that final approval at the, will be at the March RMLD Board Meeting. I've asked the Department, since the Subcommittee is scheduled to meet at 5:30 that night, I've asked the Department to schedule a 7:30 meeting of the Commission that same night, right afterwards. So that if any agreement is can, we have the Commission review it right away and potentially approve it at that night, if we want to at this point. The following is the reason we are not attempting to negotiate tonight is for several reasons. One, the Committee's already been tasked with, with this assignment. The RMLD has to vet the proposed approach and test it against the capital needs of the organization. The RMLD has been working over the past couple of months with a consultant on what is revenue erosion and the effect it's going to have on capital, due to solar and possible industrial to commercial conversions, which have impacted revenues by more than 1 percent, and a flat to slight decrease is expected to continue. Solar and battery combinations, combination systems impact have not been included as yet in the projections. The RMLD is also reviewing other liabilities, such as OPEB and pension funding contributions. The monthly meetings, as you can see tonight, we have other things that we need to deal with on the agenda. Our rate payers deserve a full, a well-thought-out and deliberated outcome, which the Committee is intending to provide. The RMLD has an obligation, as a not-for-profit municipality, to provide for lower-cost electricity, excellent customer service, and excellent reliability. As everyone knows, there are three other communities that are involved in this, and those representatives are represented by the CAB members. They need to be properly updated and involved with any final recommendations. In summary, it is our intent to address the issues of the, of the RMLD payments to the Town of Reading thoroughly, expeditiously, fairly, and in the best interest of all the rate payers in mind. Thank you. Any Commissioners want to add anything at this point?
Yeah, I do. I just want to echo what Phil said. As a citizen of Reading and a member of this Board, I think it's important that we do whatever we can at RMLD to help address the fiscal pressure that's on the Town of Reading, in a way that doesn't negatively impact the rate payers in all four towns. So I just echo that. I believe we have a good process to continue forward with the Committee to reach resolution, hopefully in the next month.
I hope on March 13th, on March 13th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment as well?
Please, go ahead, Mrs. Stempak.
I hope you can all hear me okay.
Yep.
First, I'd just like to thank the Selectmen for attending the meeting, and I wish I could be there in person, but this trip was planned for over a year, and everyone knows the cost of changing plane tickets, so it's really, really difficult. As our Chairman has mentioned, you know, we are in a partnership with North Reading, part of Linfield, and Wilmington, and it's only through this partnership that we, as consumers, can realize the lowest electric rates in perhaps all of Massachusetts, because of our group buying power. Without that, and we've looked at it, your rates will double, maybe even triple if you're owned by Eversource or National Grid. So being a part of a municipal electric source as a group, we're capable of doing this. And it's not just our, our rate payers in terms of consumers, but also many of our industrial and commercial customers that will see us, such as Analog Devices, or Teradyne, or other major electricity users. We know that Reading's got a number of financial issues, driven by a number of different things that have happened over the past 10 years, and we don't need to go into the elaboration of that right now, but we understand the difficulty that you face of trying to make this work within our Town. But we, we're, we live in Reading too, and we want to preserve our, our excellent school system. All of my children went through it, it was fantastic. I think we've got a great infrastructure in Town, and I think we've developed a, a super Reading culture, and I think we just need to preserve that as well. But as our Chairman has mentioned, 80 percent or more of the electricity that we buy and sell is outside of Reading. So the agreement with these other towns mandates we have a fair and equitable solution and sharing of any money generated. We've honored this for over 20 years. So, of course, we want to help the Town of Reading, and we want to, but we also want to preserve our Charter in terms of all of our constituency, and that includes the Citizens' Advisory Board from these four towns. It's not an insignificant task, and we cannot show favoritism to Reading without endangering this responsibility. So I think we all just need to take a deep breath and kind of let us do our job, and I think we do have a, as our Chairman has mentioned, a founding mechanism to help everybody in this process without endangering our capital budgeting program. We just can't pick a number out of the air and hope it works. We need to blend it into our capital program and our Town distributions, and we need to live within the state mandated cap on our return. So, in any event, I just, you know, as I thought of this meeting tonight, I kept remembering the phrase, united we stand and divided we fall, and it's certainly true today as when it was first uttered. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat what's said. I would say that, two things, a number of us are also Town Meeting members, so we're acutely aware of the, the challenges ahead for the Town of Reading and fully supporter of that, so we're, I hope that'll be obvious in terms of the path forward, and we've asked everyone here to work as a team, I hope we can count on all of us to do that and, and reach the solution, which I think can be a win-win for Reading as well as the rest of our towns.
Okay. Dave, you want to add anything?
Hold on, Finance Committee, go with it.
Okay. Forgot.
Dave Talbot?
Dave Talbot, you wanted to say something? Dave, are you there? Dave Talbot?
I thought he was on. Okay.
You want to add anything?
Dave is in the process of driving, so it's possible that he's maybe going through some areas with poor reception.
Okay.
No.
So, at this point, George, do you want to add anything?
No, I think you guys are, sorry.
Okay. At this point, I would open up for anybody who wants public comment. I do ask that you come up to the, speak to the microphone, so the cable TV, Mr. Arena.
Mr. Patino, what's?
I ask that you come up to the microphone, please, so the cable TV can?
Do you have a question?
Okay.
Will you cover the same topic again under your report from the Chair?
No, we will not. We will not at this point. This, this will, this will cover it in terms of that point. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean, I meant to ask, add that.
First of all, thank you for your, your comments, and the, in addition to the comments, the tone, which is, I think, one of trying to find a path forward. I do think it would be remiss if we didn't reflect that we are here tonight in the latter half of February discussing a commitment that was made in April, and I fully understand the calendar and the schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but could you move the phone closer to the speaker, please?
I don't know if we can, you're going to be able to do that?
Is there a way to do that?
I don't know if we can do that.
It's wireless.
Oh, it is wireless?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it is very capable.
Very easy.
Go ahead, John.
See, you could have done that, too. We're here tonight, really about two issues. One is about timeliness, and the other is about process. We're here in the latter half of February discussing an Instructional Motion made almost a year ago. And while I fully understand that meeting schedules get difficult, I do think that it's hard not to listen to the discussion and conclude that there's, at least, was an opportunity for greater urgency that perhaps wasn't achieved. Five months without a first meeting would seem to be preventable at some level. Having said that, we are where we are. I am heartened by your comments about taking the Instructional Motion to heart. Reading, the Town of Reading is in a very unusual spot, and we are moving towards a, our ballot question on April 3rd. For those listening at home, the discussion tonight has no bearing on the April 3rd override vote at all. The discussion tonight is purely on the matter of improving the relationship between the Town of Reading and Reading Municipal Light, which is an asset and an entity owned by the Town of Reading. The, the timing and the calendar is purely coincidental, the two have absolutely nothing to do with each other. I would like to suggest that we actually amplify the effort further, and that we would add a second Board of Selectmen, and for that purpose, I would volunteer myself, in addition to Mr. Ensminger. That provides a body, a greater amount of activity that we can throw in the mix, and try to establish a greater task tension around the end objective. I do believe Reading Municipal Light has done a fantastic job at running its, its business. You look at your balance sheet, you've got an outstanding, you've got a strong balance sheet, you've got 15 million in unrestricted cash, you've got, adding to your equity position at a million or two or $3 million dollars a year. That's a, that's a growing business. That's a fantastic business, and we don't want to do anything that puts that at risk. On the other hand, a strong perform, annual performance like that clearly can support some additional support to the Town of Reading. So I'm committing here tonight, as a member of the elected Board for the Town, to get this over the finish line, and it's going to happen on a schedule that is accelerated, I think, by virtue of having more resources. I'd like to see some progress, such that by annual Town Meeting in April, we can give a status report, and my objective would be to have this wrapped up no later than the end of our fiscal year in, in June, absolutely, long before then. But I want to have a status report for the Town Meeting, one year to the date, when the original commitment was made, so we can at least show progress to goal. And I don't think today we can. I think there's meetings and discussions and good feelings, but there's absolutely nothing tangible that I can put my hands on. So by, again, that April date, I'd want to have something tangible to report on, and then progress to goal. I do think this is one of the most critical aspects facing our Town. We're blessed to have Reading Light, in that it's an asset for the community. The question is, how does it best operate within the Town, and how does it best improve the Town's position? So, again, I'm heartened by your opening comments. I've had a chance to talk to some of you individually, and I look forward to working together with Mr. Ensminger and the members of RMLD Light Board on this topic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Arena, will you stay there for one, just one minute?
Sure.
I, the original mode, the original setup of the Subcommittee did call for two Selectmen at one time. So you certainly can have another, you certainly are welcome to be part of that, that Committee.
Thank you.
I also would like to see this wrapped up by annual Town Meeting also. So I echo your commitment on that, from my standpoint.
And I think there's time to do that. With the few weeks we have left, I think there's a chance to get that done.
The one thing I would like to offer to you is, I watched the meeting the other night, you said you needed some more information. I would offer our legal counsel to meet with the Town's legal counsel to, to work out, to go over some of the, what, the laws that we have on that.
Yeah, that's already happening in parallel. That's a completely parallel discussion.
Okay, that's fine. I was unaware that was happening.
That's on its own track and schedule, but this discussion, I think, is the primary objective, to get this done.
Okay.
This, and I think, given the time and the task tension and the talent, there's absolutely no reason we can't have something to report in April, and a nice bow on the package, you know, sometime in the May timeframe, well before the end of the fiscal year.
All right.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to have a member of Finance Committee to be on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm having a hard time hearing you, just to let you know.
Okay. I need to move that.
Let me, let me take this back.
Just as, we, okay, being a former Finance Committee Chairman.
You guys hear me? I can't hear, I heard Mr. Arena very clearly, but not, you know, can you hear me?
Being a former Finance Committee Chairman at one time, I understand that the, there is a restriction of the Finance Committee member being on that, being actual member, but you can have a liaison, and we certainly welcome anybody as a liaison.
By that you mean a non-voting member, I think.
A non-voting member. But certainly, you can, a liaison, you can come and have your input at the meeting. Okay? Okay. We are scheduled for March 13th, so, 5:30.
Good.
What is it, 12th?
Dave, could you mute your, mute your, your microphone?
Yeah, it's the 12th. Okay, so March the 12th, 5:30 is the meeting. Okay? All right, very good. Mr. Berman?
Am I going here?
Tracy, you're going to need to move the.
Yeah, just grab it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Barry Berman, 54 Longview Road, and a member of the Reading Board of Selectmen. I again echo, you know, thanks for actually having us here. This is, I think, the first time that, as a member of the Selectmen, I've actually attended one of your meetings. It might have been overdue, and I'd like to actually have you guys come to our meeting from time to time as well. So a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I, I want to echo some of the things said in that, you know the, the budget struggles that we're going with right now. Partners that we used to have, really, are stepping away from the table. Commonwealth of Massachusetts used to fund 25 percent of our revenue, it's now down to 15. We're going to the, to the taxpayers again to support public safety and education. But one of the things that I, I think, as a, as a rate payer and as a citizen first, and as a Selectman last, I do want to just compliment Reading Municipal Light for the services and the rates that they provide, as well as the support that they've done to the Town of Reading, year after year. Some of those folks at home may be thinking that Reading Municipal Light might be a little stingy in that, what they support to the Town. But if you look at our budget, you'll see fully $2.4 million dividend that gets paid to the Town of Reading currently. And what we're asking for, first of all, that's a great partnership that we want to have. One thing I can tell you, if you put sort of a popularity contest between any elected official in this Town and RMLD, RMLD would probably be the most popular of any of us. So we're grateful to have it. What we're really talking about is just, what little more can you do? And so I don't want to leave the impression that with a, with a great balance sheet, that you're, you're kind of being stingy. You're, you're not. It's just that little bit extra. The other piece is that I know is that, a lot of folks should understand that unlike the, on the Town side, RMLD fully funds its OPEB obligation. That's, and that's part of where those revenues go. So you are a good caretaker, we're grateful to have RMLD, I am hopeful, from, and just, Mr. Pashino, if I can just sort of echo or amplify, so is it the intention to have the group, the Subcommittee that's already been empowered, meet on the 11th or 12th, I think you said?
12th, March the 12th.
12th, and then you, with the purpose of having an agreement. Now also, Mr. Arena mentioned something, voting members. Is this going to be, is this Committee then vote?
No, what this, the intention of the Committee is to make a recommendation that would, that would each be taken back to each of the groups, to both the Commission, the CAB, and the Board of Selectmen, and it'd be the Board, and it'd be the individual Boards that take the votes on this.
And so, so then, from what I understand, from what you said, is that that Subcommittee meeting will be on the 12th, and then you'll be having a regular RMLD Board Meeting. So conceivably, you could, whatever, you, you could make that recommendation and that vote, and then we're, we're meeting on the 13th, so.
Okay.
I believe the 13th.
Like I said, I.
So this could be done and dusted a month before Town Meeting.
Well, that's, I agree with, you know, Mr. Arena, I made the commitment that we would have this for Town Meeting.
Okay. Which is, I mean, we are where we are, you know, like writing a term paper, sometimes you do it on the last night, but when, the professor never knows, right?
I never did that.
And so, so, and I'm hoping that this term paper gets a high grade. So I'm grateful, I, I, you know, I know that we'll be well-represented on the Board and with you, and that we'll come up with something. But again, I just want folks to understand that RMLD does contribute significant funds to the budget of the Town of Reading, and I just don't want that fact to be lost. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any other input, Mr. Arena?
All right, Phil, would it be possible to schedule a second date in anticipation of a need for one, even though we may not need it? Get it on the calendar.
Okay. Tracy, will you circulate a memo and people can supply dates? Tracy will put a memo, email out tomorrow.
Monday following, perhaps, maybe you just.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. So I have no issue with the Monday following. So, okay?
Maybe the 12th and the 17th.
The 12th and the 17th.
Thank you.
No, no, 12th and the 19th, right?
19th. 12th and the 19th, uh.
Unless you want to meet on Saturday.
No, it's the 19th.
If you bring the coffee, we'll be all set. Okay? Any other folks? Yes, we have another Selectmen.
Thank you.
Come up to them, come up to the microphone, please, so the cable TV people can, the people who are, all our fans can watch us.
You get to be on TV.
Just, this is a small procedural point. I have to ask the rest of the Board of Selectmen if, if John was nice enough to volunteer, are we all good with having him join this Subcommittee? We should officially do that.
The Chair makes the call.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are those meetings public, by the way?
Yes.
Yes, they're posted. They're posted meetings. Okay, thanks.
Conference room, office superintendent, sorry, the.
Yes. Okay. Good luck. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Enzinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking forward to continuing our work on the 12th.
Okay, very good.
Good. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, everybody.
Will that be the last word on this, this evening?
Yes, it will be. There'll be no, no further discussion at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hi, John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road, North Reading. Those who were paying attention to the last, last Board Meeting will know, that, might know something about what I'm going to talk about. I just want to mention briefly, since, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned solar sort of in passing in terms of what's facing RMLD, I guess I would just encourage you, and I will come, I will save my other remarks for another night, because I know you've got a lot on your, on your calendar, but just encourage you to think about new technology different, because you've got solar, you've got batteries, you've got electric vehicles. We did put solar in our particular house. That dropped our, our consumption. 70 percent, 76 percent of what we produce actually gets exported to the grid. We also bought an electric vehicle, which tripled our consumption. So I would encourage Reading Light not to, I encourage you all to see these technologies as potentially a boon. And I would say, with 94 houses, residential systems, and among the 20,000 customers, I'm pretty sure residential solar is not part of the reason for, you know, with $100 million in revenue, I'm pretty sure that's rounding error there. So, and I will say, systems, it's clear from the numbers, it's clear from when we are producing, when, when systems are producing, that we are providing a whole lot more benefit than is compensated at this point. So look at solar as a, as a boon at this point. I would encourage, and I will be back, to encourage the Board to change the compensation structure, to encourage more solar, because, again, as I talked about last month, as I said in the follow-up letter to you all, I think it is a benefit to RMLD, not a threat. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Any further comments? Any further comments?
Yeah, move to John. Second, are those in favor? 5-0.
Okay, let's, why, we'll take, we'll take a five-minute break, if you would, at this point?
Yes.
All right. Should we get going again?
Yeah.
Okay? All right.
Meeting is re-adjourned.
Right? Re-convene?
Unadjourned.
Okay. Very good. I think we've kind of covered the public comment at this point, so. Actually, I did watch you all.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a quick comment?
Sure, if you would, please.
Yes, so for those left in our viewing audience at home, I, I've been very pleased. I think we have a strong sense of collaboration and teamwork on all parts of, that, let alone will, I think, drive the process and get us over the goal line.
Okay.
So I'm very, very pleased and thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leadership.
All right. Very good. Let's, I guess we got, first off, I watched you all on TV because I was not able to make the last meeting, because I caught the flu.
Thank you for not coming.
Yes. Well, I would have had to come with a mask on. I don't think that would have looked pretty, that would have looked good, so. So let's move to the approval of the board minutes. Now, because we have two members on the phone, everything has to be a roll call vote tonight. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
If you want to make the motion, please.
Well, before, do we have a, we're gonna, do we have any liaison comments from CAP?
I don't know. George, I mean, you, you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Okay?
Okay, uh, move that the Board approved the meeting minutes of December 14th, 2017.
It's been moved, is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Arro.
Mr. Arro, aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Mr. Stempack?
Mr. Stempack, aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Okay, very good.
Talbot, aye.
All right. We've covered item six, which is the subcommittee. And so now we're up to the General Manager's report.
Um, thank you. I, I'd like to make a request to see if we could have the financials done first because I know Wendy is, um, she's feeling a little down and we'd like to let her.
Okay, very good. Wendy, why don't you come right up?
She's done such a great job supporting us all week and we let her go early.
Okay, very good.
The financials gonna pick us up, Wendy? Is that the idea?
Not gonna make any promises.
All right.
Come on right up, Wendy. Very good.
We have time, Jane. I'm gonna start with the balance sheet. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so you should have the financials in front of you. So as usual, I'd like to start with the balance sheet and just note that, of course, cash is in a strong position. We had to move a little bit of money recently with the capital projects that are going on. We felt as though we didn't move enough money at the end of fiscal year 17 to our construction fund. So in December, we decided to move another $1.2 million as we are allowed to do based on our rate of return of last year. So we took that opportunity to help fund the capital projects that maybe were unforeseen at the time. Okay? So we moved 1.2 million. You'll see that line item right there on page two, cash construction fund. And you'll see that as a separate line item. I wanted it to stand out so that you would be aware of it. And then looking at the balance sheet, our capital assets are up 3.7 million from last year, which shows that we're continuing to build on our capital infrastructure. Right now, our accounts receivable are pretty much about the same as it, as it was last year this time. And I'd like to say that we are running about 93.8% current as compared to last year of 93.7, so very consistent as we're collecting money. So Jane's group is doing a great job with that. So accounts payable is up about 1.1 million currently and that just, again, you know, that could be the timing of things. So I'm gonna move to cash, page two. So the operating fund is up 1.4 million from last year. And the, um, the depreciation and the construction fund together are down about $78,000, which is very insignificant at the time. So page three, everybody seems to like this reconciliation of capital funds. Shows you where the money comes to fund the capital projects. And then, of course, we, we show the interest that we earn monthly, about almost $30,000 so far on the depreciation fund. And then we transfer the depreciation from the operating fund monthly so that it doesn't skew the financials in a bad way. So right now, the depreciation transfer is about $2.1 million. A total source of capital funds of $8.3 million. And so far to date, we've used funds of 2.7, which leaves us at $5.5 million. Okay, so looking at the first slide, I like to put into perspective every now and again how our base revenue compares to our operating expenses, what it actually costs us to make money. So currently, we have a decrease in base revenue of 1%, but it's actually costing us an increase of 1% to get that, to get that amount. So.
So 2% negative?
In essence. I mean, in theory, you could say it that way, sure. 13.5 million dollars from 2016, revenue down to 13.4. And our operating expenses from 2016 were 10.1 million and currently they're 10.2 million. Moving to the next slide, I'd like to show you how we're doing on our operating and maintenance expenses overall compared to our budget. So overall, we are under budget. December was a little bit of a catch-up month, mostly because of some storms we had around Christmas time and earlier in the month. So we did incur a little more cost than what we had expected. And then the last slide, the last slide shows you the trend of base revenue and kilowatt hours sold by month comparing the first six months of the fiscal year 17 to the first six months of fiscal year 18. And it shows you that exactly as I pointed out, the base revenue is down 1%. And it also shows you that kilowatt hours are down. And then you can see the little bit of a spike there in December. I asked Jane to look that up for me and she said it was a 16% increase in heating degree days. So basically, it took, it was a colder month. So that's why we ended up with more kilowatt hours sold. So if you look at the page six and seven and if you compare our regular, actual year-to-date financials compared to the budget, we should be around 50%, right? Because we're halfway through the year. And our operating and maintenance expenses right now are coming in at an operating income of 46.8%. So we're a little bit, overall, we're a little bit over budget, but our operating and maintenance expenses are under budget. So this could be, this could have a lot to do with power right now because 49.8% budget remains in the power. And we just, you know, as we do, we play catch-up with that every month. Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead. Just one, when you, when earlier, when you're talking about expenses running higher than the revenue or matching. Was there anything driving that particularly? Did you notice or?
Well, I think in December, I had talked to Hamid and we did have a couple storms. Some, there might have been a little more overtime cost than we had budgeted for at the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Dave, you're set. John and Dave Talbot on the phone, you, you all set? Any questions?
Uh, no, I think.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, Dave. I'm just having a hard time hearing it, but no, I don't have questions. John.
Oh, we need to, we should have moved it over. We should have moved it over.
My own comment was, it does track the 1% decrease in revenue that we've been talking about, so I think it's, it certainly is a fact that the revenue seemed to be coming down as we had predicted.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you, John.
Okay. We're set? Okay, very good. Thank you, Wendy. Colleen, we're back to you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yep.
You don't work any spreadsheets.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to provide some feedback on the opportunity I had to, um, to participate in the Public Power Summit, which was a nationwide networking sponsored by Nextera Energy and Florida Power and Light. The training sessions included the future outlooks of worldwide energy resources, the export import to the United States on all of those different types of resources, including coal and oil, et cetera, gas pricing and energy pricing. And then we went into the Hurricane Irma restoration effort, so we went into a lot of the operations of larger utilities as we compare them to Reading Light. And then we finished up with human resources strategies on, you know, new generations that are coming in at those type of topics. I also had the opportunity to visit Nextera's solar energy lab where they have a number of different solar arrays of which they've been, you know, doing testing over time of the most efficient and everything that they're installing for their projects and how it's impacting their sales. Their National Wind Operations Center where they, they operate in control of 1,200 wind turbines in one room, pretty impressive. And their Command Center for all of their resources, including hydro, nuclear, solar, and I got to see their power trading floor, which was very interesting. And we, since we have our new risk management strategic plan that we're working with Nextera, it really put into perspective how all the different people have to, you know, participate. This one has to talk to this one with all of the trading and information that flows back to us so that we can make decisions to keep our rates low. Meeting and discussing all these important factors that relate to how energy will be generated and managed in the future, what public power folks from across the country really did, has, has helped to add value to the RMLD strategic roadmapping that we're doing in each of the divisions right now. So thanks again for allowing me to attend that. I appreciate it.
Okay. Florida?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get to say Florida Power?
Yeah.
We did, good.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Any questions? Okay. Uh, let's move up to Jane. You get, you get to take the, take that over with you.
Tracy, can we get one for every board?
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm here to update you on community events, first of all. We've completed the information sessions for our high school art contest. We've attended all the high schools within our service territory as well as had a session here at RMLD. Currently, we have 21 students that have signed up for this program. The students have till April 13th to turn in their artwork, so we're very excited about what, what we're gonna see with that. We're, there's an ongoing effort to update RMLD's website. Currently, it's not mobile-friendly and a lot of people are using it on their mobile device, so we'll be rolling that out within the next couple of months. We've made some good progress on that and Joyce is heading that effort up. In addition, in the month of April, we'll be holding a Save Energy and Money sessions at all the libraries. We held one here at the RMLD in January and we had close to 50 people attend. So there were a lot of great questions, a lot of helpful information. And we'll be going to the libraries and hoping that people attend in good ways to save money and, and to look at their consumption and RMLD's rates and our different programs such as solar choice, et cetera.
When is the next one?
Um, there, it's on the website right now. They're scheduled for April. We can get that information to you though, Tom.
I'll check the mobile app.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'm here to report on our December Purchase Power. What we did, because it was the end of the year, we looked at calendar year, year 2016 versus 2017. This first slide depicts the fuel charge adjustment. The orange line represents the fuel charge for the 12-month period of 2016 and the green line depicts it for 2017. As you can see in the chart, at the very end, we have averages. And the average for 2016 was a little over 4.9 cents per kilowatt hour and in 2017, that dropped to 4.6 cents. So there was about a 5% decrease in our fuel charge. And again, fuel charge is a pass-through. The RMLD does not make a return on that. So whatever our costs are, those are reflected back to our consumers within the fuel charge adjustment. The next slide looks at the monthly purchase power capacity and transmission charge. Again, 2016 versus 2017 with the orange representing 16 and the green representing 17. As you can see, over the averages, the 2016 was a little, about 5 cents and that's bumped up to 5.3 cents in the calendar year. There's been a, if you look at July, the July period, there was a 10% increase from 2016 to 2017. And what's driving that factor is the increase in capacity costs. As we had said, we're in the NEMA load zone and capacity has significantly increased. The budget for the fiscal year 18 versus 17 is a $5 million increase in capacity alone. And so that's reflective, again, in a, in a, in a pass-through charge, RMLD does not make any return on that. Those costs are passed directly to our customers. The next slide looks at the New York Power Authority credit. This is a credit that residential customers receive. It's based on a federal legislation back in the 80s, I believe it was, where Newing.
It's been around as long as I have.
It's, okay. So that credit is designated for residential customers only and it's, it's the benefit of having hydropower within our portfolio. And that's been pretty, pretty flat. In 2016, it averaged about 4.8 cents. There's a slight increase of 2.7 cents. Doesn't amount to a whole lot of dollars, that differential. So it's a, it's again, it's a credit that goes to the residential customers. And then on this last graph, what we did is we melded all those. We looked at the fuel charge plus the purchase power capacity charge and then we subtracted the credit. And if you look at calendar year 2016 versus 2017, the 16 average was about 9.448 cents. And in calendar year 2017, it averaged 9.46 cents. So relatively flat. It's anticipated that that's going to be increasing in 2018. And again, the driving factor for that will be the PPCT, Purchase Power Capacity Transmission, with capacity and transmission driving that component.
Any questions? Comments? Nope?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Jane.
Thank you.
Okay. Hamid, you're up.
My turn.
Yes. You get to, leave the mic where it is.
Good evening. I'm here to report the engineering and operations activity.
I'm here to report Engineering and Operations activities for the month of December. The first, is it coming?
Yeah.
Good.
There it is.
There it is.
Good. Well, the first slide basically is showing you all the capital improvement projects and the activities and percent completion month of December. So I'm not going to go over all of those projects, but basically, these are the ones that the board already approved for constructions. The second slide is showing you Engineering and Operations, the routine capital constructions. These are non-project capital authorizations that we, your activities, these expenditures that, you see that for the month of December, we spent approximately $126,093. That brings year-to-date to $672,906. The next slide is showing you the facilities, IRD and IT, the other groups, capital authorization projects. And you see the expenditures for month of December and the remaining balance on those on the right. All in all, in month of December, we spent $499,594 across all categories. That's going to bring the year-to-date to $2,736,558. And the remaining balance for the rest of the year is $4,948,963. We've got two or three, actually, capital improvement projects, the heavy ones that they're going to get started actually next week. For Station 3, the reactors, we're going to be installing at Station 3 for arc flash, as well as the projects on Woburn Street in Wilmington, that we are upgrading the infrastructure, the old infrastructure. So those two, they're coming up, and that's going to drive up, basically. That's what most of the cost is going to expand. The next one, the next slide gives you the routine maintenance across all those categories that you see, the transformer replacement, pole inspections, quarterly inspection of feeders, manhole inspections, and porcelain cutout replacements. We're making good progress on those. We keep continuing upgrading the old age transformers that, you know, that they're off there, both in overhead and underground. We're making great progress on those, as well as the pole inspections that we have 10 percent of the poles in Redding, or 10 percent of the Redding Municipal Light Department's owned poles. Inspected every year, and the ones that now they're failing or they need to be replaced, we just take care of those. So far, 165 of those 180 poles that we have replaced and upgraded, they've been transferred and completed. So we're making good progress on those. Under the routine maintenance, next slide, you see the tree trimming, that program is really going well, and I'm really proud of it. I mean, we've made a great progress on those, and you could see that on the future slides, that you know how the trend over the five years average been going down, so less and less tree incidents. Substation maintenance, we infrared scan all the substations on monthly, as well as the parks quarterly. And so far, we haven't had any hotspot or signs of deteriorations. So that's a good program. Underground subdivision upgrade, this is something that newly, we, it's been going on at a slow pace, but we have instituted that program in order to address the aging facilities, underground facilities, infrastructures. We recently completed Crestwood Estates in North Redding, Aspen Road in North Redding, and Long Hill Road in North Redding. And we got a number of other projects that are in progress, working those. These are the ones that we upgrade the underground facilities, like cables, the elbows, and as well as the transformers, that they're aging transformers. So we're actually killing two bears with one stone, upgrading the transformers, the aged transformers, as well as the cables on all the secondaries and primaries in the area. So that's Shasta Drive in North Redding, Westover Drive in Linfield, Greenbrier Drive in North Redding, Great Neck Drive in Wilmington, Gandalf State in Wilmington, and Deerfield Place in North Redding. So all the communities pretty much, you know, they're getting, they're addressing the aging infrastructure. The next slide shows the DAVR poles, basically. The ownership is 50-50. We've got approximately 16,000 poles, the custodial of the poles in North Redding, and half the Redding is with the tunnel Redding, I mean, North Redding Municipal Light. Linfield and Wilmington, they're fully rise and set areas. The next slide, my favorite slide, it shows actually we're making progress. It shows the engines, that's a program that shows the ball in court, basically, for all the utilities. In tunnel Linfield, RMLD has five poles to transfer, that we are taking care of that. In North Redding, we've got 12 transfers and 17 pole bots that are going to be removed. If you recall, that this number was upright around 99 to 100. So we've been cutting that down and taking care of lots of those. But this is, again, a moving target, you know? That shows that, you know, we're taking care of the old facilities, both overhead and underground, as I mentioned. The Redding, in tunnel Redding, we've got 23 transfers and 59 pole bots that are going to be removed. In Wilmington, we've got only 10 transfers that we're going to have to take place, it's going to have to take place. And we're making good progress on those. The next slide shows you the reliability indices, pretty much all the reliability indices, SADI, KD, and SAFI. For the entire year in 2017, they were well below the national and the regional averages, which is good. As you see, the reliability is in good state of health condition. So we're proud of that. The last slide is showing the causes of the origin for past, in 2017, compared to the five years average. And as you could see, the equipments are going down, the trees, wildlife, the vehicle accidents, and the weather-related, and nouns, and also nothing under the utility, human error. So all in all, they're making progress, and it's good. So that concludes my report for the year 2017. If you have any questions, we're more than happy to.
Go ahead, if you would, please.
Everybody knows that we recently built the GIS system, which is a staple for any utility, for understanding every piece of asset that we have out there with the latitude and longitude. But it also allows us to, for planning purposes, for all of our maintenance and our capital, it allows us to run different scenarios on the electricity and how that runs and capacity, and why would we build a new substation in Wilmington? And it allows us to do all of those engineering. But also, it validates data that we are not quite sure about. So recently, we just found out that we have 212 of these underground subdivisions that are over 40 years old. Okay? So while we've been picking at them, and Hamid and I put them on the schedule for the capital plan, as this GIS data comes back, it confirms a lot of what we thought. And, you know, you're seeing the underground subdivisions that he's got on there for right now, but when the capital budget comes up, I just want everybody to be aware that as this GIS data, because you may have said, well, I thought they had everything listed. As this GIS data comes in, you're going to see another bump as we start to put this information into it. And Tyler's still here sometimes.
The title?
Tyler's our GIS guy. So just so you know, I mean, we're addressing everything, but there is aging infrastructure, and we are, now, I feel like we've captured almost everything. We're getting there.
Until 2035, we've got work to do.
Right. But at least we're scheduling it out, and we are trying to go.
I will not be here in 2035.
I'm not planning to be over here, too.
Not until 2000.
Yeah. It's good to have a plan. So what we did, we have categorized them based on the age and prioritized them, which ones they, we need to get first. And there's so much to do. It's unbelievable.
Okay.
So when you see those costs and the capital improvements going up, this is one of the reasons that, you know, we're capturing, like what Colleen said, lots of stuff that, you know, we didn't know before until we got this GIS round and...
How does the GIS give you the age of the system?
Well, as they go around collecting the data, they know the nameplate of the transformers. So we got a transformer database already that, you know, somebody entered the data, it's an Excel sheet. But when you go out in field, there's a nameplate that says when that transformer was manufactured. And then we compare that against our database, and we say, okay, this transformer is, what, 20 years? We've got transformers that as old as 40 years, 45 years. And some of those, I mean, the transformers, the life expectancy, based on manufacturer's definition, you know, it's 20 years. So as you go 20 years and up, you know, you're basically pushing it.
Right.
And we've got lots of those.
So it's amazing they're still operating.
Yes, you are absolutely right.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, you know, for, again, those still listening at home as well, you know, I think Colleen's team...
Speak loud. Make sure you speak loud, so John can hear you.
John, can you hear me?
No, I didn't hear your last comment, Tom. Sorry.
Oh, okay. It was, I can't remember. It was pretty good, though. No, I was just about to say, Colleen and her team in all areas, but since we're talking about this, I think, you know, one of the successes of RMLD is really, in the last several years, is focusing on the capital improvements and infrastructure. And that allows, I think, the RMLD to provide the kind of reliability and cost-effective rates that all of the towns enjoy. So I think it's also a good example, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, of having a program outlining all needs and then addressing it. And, you know, thankfully, didn't go through them all. I mean, just looking at the spreadsheet, you identify a lot of things that need attention, and they're getting done. So congratulations.
Absolutely right, and well put. I mean, having preventive maintenance, especially in something as important as the electrical system, is absolutely first priority to keeping... I mean, it's one thing to lose your internet, it's a nuisance, but when you lose your electricity, it's life-threatening. So it's just so important to keep the maintenance up.
Excellent.
Okay. Very good.
Do you need any money?
Yes.
A lot of it.
You want to go to procurement?
I'll be happy to. Okay. Move that bid 2018-34 for HVAC and ice machine preventative maintenance and repair service be awarded to Ambient Temperature Corporation for $89,808. Send it to MTL C30, 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. It is a three-year contract.
Is that second?
Second.
You've got to come over here and speak, so the fellows on the phone can hear you.
Okay. I sit next to Colleen.
Oh, yeah. That's a good idea.
Oh, yeah. Great.
Jared?
Yes, go ahead.
Is Hamid explaining this one? I didn't hear the...
Yes. We're moving him in front of the speaker.
Yeah, I'm here now.
Can you hear him okay?
Yeah. I just want to understand what this one is and how good this is and all that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a 30-39M bid. It's a three-year contract. We send a bid to 24 contractors, basically, and four only responded. None of them took any exceptions. The lowest responsible bidder was $89,808. And the last time that this went out to bid, by the second quarter of 2015, the total cost was $71,368. And now, the new one, obviously, they've gone up by $89,808.
Okay.
So that's what the story is with this.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry, didn't hear all that. It's just supposed to be this level of meeting.
Speak up.
Yes, Dave. You said there was four big bids.
Yeah, we had four. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Dave, can you hear better now?
Yeah, I just want to, can I hear correctly, is it four projects that were all...
Yes.
That's just separate, valid.
The bid went out to 24 contractors, and only four responded. And none of them, they took any exceptions. So the lowest bidder was Ambient Temperature Corporation for $89,808. And the last time that we went out to bid for the same contract, it was in second quarter of 2015, in December, yeah, the second quarter. And it just recently, the contract ended in December, for a total of $71,368. So it's gone up across...
Three years?
Yeah, for three years, yeah.
So what changed that issue? It got up $15,000.
What caused it?
Yeah.
I think, I think mostly it's labor. It's labor. That's what caused it to go up.
Yeah, it's a little, it's 25 percent increase.
25 percent increase in labor, basically. We had prices, actually, what the codes, they came out, 89, the next one up was $98,874. That was cooling and heating specialists. And then one, the next one up was 126. And actually, the next one for $90,000, I'm sorry, was the Limba, Limba Company, for $9,931.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess one question, so 20 didn't respond. Any idea why? Is it not a quick...
Timing, this is a small project, so most of those, you know, they're getting into big industries.
This is the worth of the project? It doesn't mean that we call them all the time?
Right.
It's just, you know, what it could be worth, but...
Oh, this is the max. In other words, we might, we might spend less than this.
This is the hourly labor? If you needed to call them in for repair? I mean, it's...
It's an estimate. Okay, very good.
Okay. This is the maintenance building, VCH system, and then something else?
Yeah, an ice machine. We've got an ice machine preventive, yeah. It's an ice machine preventative maintenance and repair service, and HVAC.
Okay. Very good. Further discussion? If not, we'll pull the board. Mr. O'Rourke?
I'm O'Rourke, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Sempec?
Mr. Sempec, aye.
Okay, very good. All right. So...
Thank you.
All right. I don't know if we have anything under general discussion, and then setting the next, the next regular monthly meeting will be March 15th?
Well, we're going to have two meetings, right? That way?
Right. We'll potentially have the March 12th, the meeting.
Right.
All right. It may be, maybe we can move the 15th to the 12th, possibly. I'll work with the department on that. Maybe we could do that all in one night, and save ourselves that second meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, just...
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thought is, because John Arena also proposed, or more than proposed, asked for a follow-up meeting. The thought might be to try to leave in place the March 12th Subcommittee meeting and then Commissioners meeting, and then if there's a need to circle back to either the CAB or anyone else or whatever, then you can still resolve everything that week, as opposed to having to...
Right. Okay.
That's why it's good to have the two.
Yeah, I guess the question is, you know, that way there, you have two meetings, but it's all in the same week, as opposed to having another one the following week. John, is that better or worse, do you think?
Well, I think if we can get it resolved on that Monday, which is March 12th...
Yeah.
And then if the Selectmen have a meeting on the 13th, perhaps a representative from the RMLD, Mr. Chairman reports to the Selectmen as well, what the results are, so that they have a feel for what we're going to be reporting on. I'm good with it either way.
Okay.
If everybody's in agreement on the 12th, then I see no need to drag it out to the 15th.
Okay.
Except for, of course, what we'd like to do is have approval as well. So now that'd be, I guess, a bit large on Monday, the 12th, right? Because if we're looking for their approval, they may have to attend as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, I assume that there's regular business for the 15th as also, so...
Yep.
I mean, just as a thought, in the interest of, you know, giving enough attention units to it, if we focus on, because the meeting on the 12th with the Commissioners is really to finalize any issues from the Subcommittee, so that...
That's true.
That's done. And then you still have the 15th meeting to do a formal vote after the CAB and Selectmen have done, and then you have your regular meeting.
Right. Just be aware that the CAB has to vote on this also.
That's what I'm saying. That would allow it-
We meet on the 21st, March. So, that way, if you're doing the 12th and possibly the 19th, that's still, gives us plenty of-
Yeah, that's fine with me. I mean, I think-
All right, that's fine.
Whatever you think is the right order to get the approvals is just fine.
Okay.
George, just a question. I'm just trying to keep with the sentiment around getting it resolved and at the end of the day, it's not that much of a time difference, but I'm just thinking, is there any opportunity for the CAB to meet the Wednesday before, so whether the 14th?
I'd have to reach out and see.
Yeah, is it worth it? That way there would have the 12th, 14th, 15th and everyone, I mean, that's pending, not having any issues.
See what, see what the interest is.
If it's not, we'll just have to leave it as it is.
Right, and we'll leave it as the 21st if that's still, that should be probably, I would suspect with the second meeting that we may not resolve everything on the 12th with all the additional-
Right, so with that going to the 19th, that leaves us right there for the 21st.
But anyway, that's, we'll cross that bridge and we come to it.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Good.
We've got CAB meetings February the 28th, which I'm coming.
28th.
28th? You've got 28th in the agenda.
Yeah, I know, did you just say the 21st though?
No, the 21st is March. All right.
Your meeting next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, John is assigned to that, so if we have something either on the 12th or the 19th, I will go to the March 21st meeting on that in place of John. John, you'll owe me one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Also, I'd like to, for our scheduling purposes, we're going to reach out and see, schedule as far as we can in advance and I'd appreciate if you guys could do the same for us, just so we have our-
Yeah, we talked about-
Are we, are we good?
Try to get the year.
Yep.
Hang on one minute.
One second.
That way, we're all set in advance.
Right. The CAB members requested that we kind of work and set some dates in advance so they can coordinate properly.
We'll try to-
Okay.
That's right, your meeting's-
All right. Yep.
Let me just revisit one issue on scheduling. So, assuming the CAB meets on the 21st, and, I mean, we want to try to tee this up so we have a vote and I think get it done in March would be the desire, right before town meeting. Would we be better served, if the CAB meeting can't occur the week before, would we be better if people are available to meet March 22nd for our meeting? That way there we'll have had feedback from, allows enough time for back and forth, you know, I would think to get the-
Yeah, I cannot be there for March 22nd.
Okay, you're okay for the 15th though, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine for the 15th. I have a business meeting out of town, but I have to be at, tails over into Friday, so I can't be there.
Let's play it by, we'll play it by, let's play it by year.
All right. I mean, there must be some way, if we get everybody in consensus, we should be able to-
Right, okay.
All right.
All right. Do I have motion to go into executive session?
Move that the board go into executive session for-